Victor.
That's okay. Hey, I'm Vaishali. Vaishali. Rao. R-A-O. You got it. Oh, here. Sorry, I'm... Sure. There you go. Me either. Hi.
Angela, good to see you. Good to finally meet you.
Oh, really? Your moustache. 9:05? Okay. Okay.
So we're only going to have short meetings then. I was like, I'll bring my doctor's note. I have one kidney. I'm not going hours without drinking.
You can't.
Where's the restroom?
Restrooms are out in the hallway.
Other side, okay.
Already signed.
Commissioner, do you want this?
Or do you want to just trade? You said that, I mean, I know what you want.
Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check. Three, four.
That's a good question.
Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four.
Do you have a client coming with you?
I have my client. Whatever you want to do.
All right. That's the idea.
Now that we're back. Now that you can see me from the waist down, I have to like the last one I saw you up.
Can we do over-unders on time?
Mic check, one, two. Mic check, mic check. Fatikas check. Mic check.
Familiar.
It's true. Where do you, do you practice?
Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic check. Sarah Barnes, Sarah Barnes, calling Sarah Barnes. Can you hear me? Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic check. A little more. Mic check. Mic check. Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check. You guys hear me? Mic check. Mic. Little more, little more. Because I'm going deaf, I can't hear it. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic check. Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic checking the mic. Mic one, mic two. Mic three, mic four. Sounds good?
Well, you're pleasant in your ears, we're not.
Mic check, one, two. That sounds a little better. Mic check, three, four. Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic check. Mic check. Moore check. Barnes check. Fatikas check. Check, check. Mic, mic, up, up. Mic. 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 Victor check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four. Mic check, one, two. We'll try that. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, three, four.
Sir, everybody, if I can just go over a couple roles for this room. Anybody who needs to use the restroom, restrooms are out in the hallway. In the lobby, so you have to use those restrooms there. No food or drinks. Please stay in this room. Don't leave your room. If you have to go out and have a conversation, you can go out into the lobby, but you can't be in the hallways here. So just make sure you stay in the room.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May 19th, 2023 in-person meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I am the chairman of the ZBA. Welcome back to in-person meetings. Due to the size of this room, we do have a shorter call than we would usually have. However, I am hopeful that we will be back in city council chambers for June, where meetings used to take place before the pandemic and we can have a full call. But now I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. First, I hereby designate alternate member Vaishali Rao to take Dirk Esposito's place as a regular member at today's meeting. So let's all welcome Vaishali. Second, I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Toya.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Rao.
Here.
I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes of April's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes. The minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes. The agenda is approved. Now I am going to take continuances and withdrawals. Who would like to go first?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name, for the record, is Thomas Moore. And with me today is Sally.
Sally Arundel.
Who has taken a leadership role in the, incidentally, this is case 9823Z, 1909 Schiller Condominium Association is the applicant, my client. And if you would allow me to just do a little context and background just so you understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. The condo association wanted to just build a pergola up on the roof. It doesn't require variance or anything, but when they went in for it, it turned out this board, it's a through lot, and this board had granted a, you have two front yards, so had granted a variance to allow garages on the one side of the two front lots in 2018. Mr. Toya was on the board at the time. Mr. Fatikas was the lawyer. And anyway, we went into, when they went in for the pergola, it turned out the cement contractor put the garage a few inches away from the sidewalk, which he thought was where the boundary of the public way was. It turns out the public way was close, was beyond there. And so the garage is actually encroaching on the public way. So we have to bring it into compliance before we can do the pergola. And so we basically had a repeat of the same variance. We went to the community group and all hell broke loose. It turns out there was dissension way back in 2018 between the people on the Evergreen side and the Schiller side on whether one should be the front yard, should be the front of the building, and one should be, you know, the alley. And the Evergreen people felt slighted, and there was a lot of antipathy. And originally, there had been a church there. There was suspicion that it had been knocked down. Two developers later, there's just a lot of history and a lot of, so when we went into the community group, we got all this antagonism and name-calling and all sorts of stuff. So Sally, who is a lawyer by training, but a trainer of leadership by profession, stepped up and she has organized the community and she has, we sat down and we came up with nine things they wanted us to do to make the Evergreen side look less like an alley. And we agreed to seven of them, a couple of them tearing up the whole cement driveway and hauling it away and putting in a green driveway. A couple of things were just too expensive and one of them was not even zoning-wise practical. But the other seven we've agreed to do. The, Sally is now, and her group has asked us to continue the case again because although we've looked into these things, we've priced them, and we started doing some of them, we haven't been able to do them. And there's mistrust on both sides. They think if we get the relief, then we won't do them. That's a little bit insulting, but my people want to be part of the neighborhood. They want to make this right. So they're agreeing with Sally's assurance that they'll withdraw their objection if we do the covering of the garbage cans and the landscaping. And she's here to tell you that she's got consensus. And, you know, our side is afraid that, well, she can't control everybody and you can't, some of these people don't want to be pleased, it seems like so. But she's here to tell you, and we wanted you to know that we're going the extra mile and we're trying to work with the neighborhood. And Sally can speak for herself.
Thank you. For the record, this is a through lot, and so there's two frontages. Evergreen was treated as an alley, and that's what it looks like. So yes, there was frustration in the neighbor group. Tom and I have, in all good faith, worked well together. I do have another neighbor here today with me who can attest that our, that's a pretty strong, strong sizable neighbor group that is opposed. We are willing to agree to let this go if these conditions that we both agreed mutually are completed by the next continuance date. And I'm happy to read out, if you need it for the record, what we have agreed. It's up to you.
Go ahead and put it in the record.
Sure. So dear panel, in relation, dear ZBA panel, in relation to this matter, we, the Evergreen Neighbor Group in Wicker Park, have been negotiating with Tom Moore, the attorney for the above-mentioned HOA, over the last two months. In good faith, we could reach a suitable outcome and withdraw our opposition to the variance the applicant is seeking. At today's hearing, we've mutually agreed, request this continuance under the following conditions. In the next two months until the next hearing date, the 1909 West Schiller HOA agreed to complete, number one, complete installation of the architect-designed trash bin storage. Number two, complete reasonable landscaping. Nothing exorbitant and lavish is sought, but a decent effort is required. Number three, to make the changes to the HOA rules as requested. And on number four, we agree that we will, that the HOA will demonstrate best efforts to have ComEd remove the current electric meter related to the old church on this building. In exchange for getting all of these things done and provided they're completed by the time of the next ZBA hearing, we, the neighbor group, agree to withdraw our opposition to the variance request being sought. So of all the neighbors in this group, no one has expressed any dissatisfaction with this outcome, and I'm confident that I represent the wishes of the group when I say that if the above actions are reasonably complete by this next hearing, we will withdraw the opposition. If they're not, we'd seek a further continuance until they're completed.
Counselor Moore, first available date we can do is July. Is that, can you get what you need done by then?
I'm sure we can, yes. We've already started.
Okay, great. All right. So this is calendar number 98-23-Z. It will be continued to July 21, 2023, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
Other continuances or withdrawals?
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Brian Friedman, Third Run Alderman, Pat Dowell's office. This is a continuance for 4023Z, 65 East, 65 through 77 East 50th Street. A set of revised plans was supposed to be turned over to Alderman Dowell's office as well as the ZBA. We do not have record of those revised plans ever being turned over. We'd like to continue to the next available date.
And sir, could you say who you are for the record?
I am Olabodde Beckley, Beckley Engineering, the architect and engineer of record. That's the last thing that needs to be done. This is the, then it's separated. Yeah.
If the, if the chairman does mind, we can discuss this in the back and then possibly come back to make sure that this is according to plans. And then if we need to entertain a continuance, would you entertain that at a later time today?
Yes.
I really appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Any other continuances or withdrawals?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Tom Pekarsky of the law firm of Gordon and Pekarsky, appearing on case 11423-S, appearing at the bottom of page two, 2310 through, 2310 East 79th Street. At the suggestion of the planning department, we are requesting a continuance on this matter to resolve any outstanding issues or attempt to resolve any outstanding issues and concerns with the aldermen in the community.
Okay. July, can you, can you work this out by July?
I think we will have clarity by July, whether it has worked out or not. We will see.
Okay, great. All right. So this matter, this is calendar numbers 114-23-S and 115-23-Z will be continued to July 21, 2023, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome back.
Any other continuances or withdrawals?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Janet Stengel of Daspin and Amment. Our offices are located at 300 South Wacker, Suite 2200 in Chicago. I am here this morning on behalf of West Care, Illinois. This is calendar number 10523-S. On behalf of my client, I'd like to formally request to withdraw this application.
Okay. So this is calendar number 105-23-S is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other continuances or withdrawals? Seeing none. Call our first case. We're calling calendar number 118-23-A. This is 26, 24 to 26 North Lincoln Avenue. If you're in support of this matter, please sit to my right. If you're in opposition to this matter, sit to my left. Everyone planning on testifying on this matter, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Fatikas, proceed.
Thank you very much. Good morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Nick Fatikas, and I'm an attorney at the law offices of Sam Banks, located at 221 North LaSalle Street. And I'm here on behalf of the appellant, 365 Outdoor LLC. We're here this morning appealing the zoning administrator's decision to not recognize legal nonconforming status and ultimately not permit the existing 338-square-foot off-premise advertising sign located at 2624 through 26 North Lincoln Avenue. The appellant started this process by applying for a sign permit for the existing wall sign located on the building's south-facing wall. The city denied the permit application and took the position that a new off-premise advertising sign could not be permitted at the location based on the current zoning ordinance. And to that point, we agree that based solely on today's ordinance, we could not comply with the site requirements to establish a new off-premise advertising sign at the property. However, it's our position that the subject sign is a legal, nonconforming, off-premise sign that was properly established prior to the 1990 and 2004 amendments to the zoning ordinance, and it's been in continuous use and existence ever since. To establish that fact, the appellant was able to locate a photo of the subject property from the Chicago Historical Society. The photo is dated June 15th of 1968, and a copy was included with their findings-of-fact submittal. And that's a critically important piece of evidence in this case because it provides an origin date for the sign. We all know that in at least June of 68, a sign was displayed on the building's south wall. We also researched and confirmed that the sign was compliant based on the applicable zoning and site restrictions in effect in 1968. To that point, we provided the board with the applicable sections of the 57 ordinance, which confirmed that advertising signs weren't allowed use in the C1-2 zoning district. And it's important to note that in 1968, the size of the sign could not exceed 24 times the lot frontage. In this case, the subject lot measures 30 feet wide and could support up to 720 square feet of total sign area. Again, the subject sign contains 338 square feet of total sign area, so it would have complied with that requirement. In 1968, advertising signs could not be located within 75 feet of a residential district. That distance is measured from the closest edge of the sign to the nearest residential zoning boundary. The subject property measures 82 feet in depth and abuts a 20-foot-wide alley at the rear. The sign itself only measures 13 feet in width. And based on the old zoning maps, including with our findings of fact, included with our findings of fact, the subject property and neighboring lots along North Lincoln Avenue were all zoned C1-2, not residential. And that's also true, and particularly important in this case, because the property located immediately south of the subject property, which fronts on Wrightwood, was also zoned C1-2. Today, it's zoned RM5. The 1957 zoning map even shows 100-foot width dimension for that lot, furthering the point that the 75-foot separation requirement for our sign was met. Lastly, in 1968, advertising signs were prohibited within 400 feet of a public park, 10 acres or more in size. John Quill Park is located about 170 feet south of the subject property. But in researching the park's history, we learned that John Quill Park did not become a city park until 1969, a year after the origin date of our sign. Before that, the city used the property for storage of salt and snow removal equipment. And all that information was obtained from the park district's website, and the history page was again included with our findings-of-fact submittal. It's also part of the handout that we submitted earlier today. And that park district summary also confirms that John Quill Park contains about 3.25 acres of land, which was below the 10-acre threshold requirement imposed by the 1957 ordinance. So again, because this subject sign predates the establishment of the park and otherwise complied with the zoning regulations in effect in 1968, it was legally established. And, Mr. Chairman, again, our findings included a more detailed summary of the sign's compliance with the 57 ordinance, and a copy was included with our findings-of-fact submittal. Now, the sign operated with various sign contractors and advertisers over the next 40-plus years. The appellant took control of the sign in late 2014. Upon securing the lease for the sign, the appellant applied for and secured a permit for the installation of exterior lights specifically, and I quote, "for the existing advertising wall sign on the south wall of the building." That same language is reflected on permit number 100568472, which issued on November 1st of 2014. A copy of the permit, again, was included with our submittal as well as your handout. We believe that permit is also very critical to today's proceeding because it provides a record that in at least 2014, the City of Chicago's building permit system recognized a wall sign on the building's south-facing wall. In addition to the electrical permit, the applicant also kept photos of various advertising displays that it managed between 2015 and 2022. We submitted 14 photos, again, taken by the applicant and kept as business records to further establish continuous use during that timeframe. Our findings also included copies of the approved and issued licenses for the retail food and tavern establishment that operates on the first floor of the building, and those are dated from November of 2021, and a 2022 building permit for renovations of the residential floors above that first floor in the building. We believe those permits and licenses are also very important to today's proceeding because the current zoning ordinance prohibits the issuance of building permits and licenses when nonconforming abandoned signs have not been removed. That language comes specifically from sections 1715, 05, 06D, and E. Now, we may be jumping ahead to the city's argument, but if the sign was never legal or was legal and subsequently abandoned at some point after that 2014 electrical permit, the city would not have been able to issue the licenses or permits it did. Our position, though, is that the city correctly issued those licenses and building permit because the sign is a legal, nonconforming sign that had never been abandoned. Now, as part of our review process, we also met with Alderman Knudsen's office. The alderman then took the matter to the Wrightwood Neighbors Association. And after considering the zoning issues and the sign's history as we know it, the alderman issued a letter stating that he believes the sign is a pre-existing, nonconforming sign that dates back to 1968. And given its 55-year history, he is not aware of any complaints or issues with nearby residents or neighbors. A copy of the alderman's letter was provided to the board prior to last month's hearing and should already be in your file. I believe it's one of the last few documents in our handout today. Now, in reviewing the zoning requirements for a new sign, the zoning administrator's denial calls out three bases for denying the sign permit application. First, the administrator cites that to the fact that this stretch of North Lincoln Avenue is a pedestrian street and that off-premise signs are prohibited on pedestrian streets. While we certainly, while that would certainly prohibit a new sign, the pedestrian street designation was not in effect in 1968, and for that reason did not prevent the legal establishment of our sign. Second, the administrator cites the 100-foot separation requirement from a residential district. Again, we provided the board with maps from 1957 and then actually from 1977, confirming that the subject sign was more than 75 feet from the nearest residential district at the time of its establishment, which, again, met the separation requirement in place at that time. And lastly, the administrator cites the size of the sign. Again, we agree that a new sign would necessarily need to be smaller, but under the 57 ordinance, the total allowed sign area was 720 square feet. The subject sign contains 338 square feet of sign area, so it clearly complies. This is very important. There are no other reasons cited in the official denial letter for the denial of this sign permit application. Those are the three bases the zoning administrator is relying on. Now, taking all this evidence together, it's our position that the off-premise sign was legally established pursuant to the standards and requirements in place in 1968, and it has remained in continuous use and existence ever since. We ask the board to overturn the denial and recognize legal, nonconforming status for the sign so a valid sign permit can be issued for it. Thank you. Chairman, actually, before I conclude, we do have a representative from 365 Outdoor, Mr. Brian Lund, and then the property owner, Sharad Kumar, who are able to test it. I'm sorry if there's a...
I'm sorry if there's a... Okay. Had you, I think what you were indicating was that your witnesses are available for questions if necessary?
There are either questions or possibly is rebuttal. I don't think, unless the board has specific questions, I think our summary stands.
I don't, I don't think so. I think at this time, if you've rested, we'll go to the zoning administrator.
Hi, good morning. For the record, Patrick Murphy, the Department of Planning and Development, the zoning administrator for the zoning bureau. I guess I'd first like to just ask, so when I went back through this application a couple of months ago, I, and maybe I just do not recall, I did not recall seeing the various dated pictures that are in this packet today. So when I had put together the packet of information that I submitted to the board about why we had rejected the application, it was based on a separate search that we had done of Google Images for the last 10 years along that...
Objection, I'm sorry, we have to object to the consideration of Google Images. The board has made it clear for foundation purposes, the basis of the objection is foundation, but for the purposes of zoning board hearings, applicants are not able to rely on Google searches or Google Images as part of our findings of fact. So I wanted to make sure that objection was made for the record.
All right. So that's not actually in the board's rules, so the objection's overruled. Continue.
Okay. To that degree, the city would not have a database of information related to buildings, signage, whatever the issue may be at hand from a zoning standpoint, historically speaking, absent the presence of permits. All that being said, when we put together our review of the application and the denial and then my review of the appeal request, our historical search of the facades of that building, the south-facing facade, which I do not argue was established legally, was established under previous zoning regulations related to off-premise signage, I, we're not questioning the origins or the legality of its initial creation. It's simply that the presence or the continued presence of an off-premise advertising signage, the continued premise of continued presence of off-premise signage, sorry, requires the continuous use and the lack of no more than a 12-month absence of it being used as such.
All right. Mr. Murphy, let me, let me interject for a second because in the, the findings of fact for the applicant, there are dated pictures. They start at, first date is 1/11/2015, and it goes to, just in, it has the year, 2022. It looks like it's maybe, I don't know, somewhere between 10 and 15 photos here. When you made your decision on this matter, did you, were these photos submitted to you?
Nick, were these submitted with the original application?
So...
Sign?
What we try to do is avoid the appeal process, and we submitted, if you recall, we submitted our packet of information. If I could just briefly expand on that. The process starts with an applicant filing the survey, the building, the sign permit application, and then a markup, almost like a site plan, so to speak, of where the sign is and the dimensions of the sign and so forth. That gets submitted to the city. Our initial application referenced that this was a legal, we called it purposely, a legal nonconforming sign. Through the normal review system, it was rejected. It was denied, not rejected, it was denied. We then, in an effort to avoid this process, submitted the history of the sign as we understood it to the department. The department came back with the denial letter that was dated November 1st, 2021, and that's ultimately what led us down this path of going through the appeal. So was the information, were all the signs in the prior zoning maps included in the original online permit application? No, but it was part of the consideration prior to obtaining the formal official zoning denial letter to allow us to go to the ZBA.
Those, okay, so that, that may have been submitted, but I do not recall seeing these images because then I had gone ahead and done my own research to see what was there. If that was overlooked as part of the packet to review, that was our, that was our error, I will accept the blame for that, but I did not recall seeing these pictures. Then the whole premise of debating the continued ability of the sign to remain is based on what I had personally reviewed showing a number of years of no sign being present.
Okay, and...
And that's what I submitted to the board.
Back and forth, so I...
Sure.
All right, so, so you don't, you don't believe you've seen the photos in the, this appeal that, that have been submitted by the applicant?
I did not recall, no, Chairman, I did not recall seeing these pictures.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I...
Here's, here's, here's my issue. I think, I think he needs to review these.
So, but I also want to be clear. Everything that you're looking at today was submitted with our findings of fact to allow us to come to the board. So I don't want it, the board to have the perception that we did a last-minute change.
No, no.
I want to make sure it was all included. Everything I did was actually, the handout was just more of a courtesy so that you weren't flipping through. If it makes sense to give, to give the city, the administrator, an opportunity to review it to see if we can find a resolution and avoid the appeal, we're open to that. Absolutely.
I think that's the best course of action here. I think he needs to review these.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I just talked to Victor to try to clear up the confusion. When the original filing was made and when I reviewed it for the rejection, it did not include this. The finding of facts that included this information is what was subsequent to that, and I had not reviewed that. I prepared for this a number of months ago when the appeal was originally filed. I did not know this additional information was there. If I, if we overlooked it, that's our mistake, but I was not aware of this when we originally rejected the request. And I'm happy to take it back to review to avoid the continuance of this appeal discussion to try to come to a different resolution.
Yeah, all right. So I'm, I'm agreeing with, with continuing this matter. So the zoning administrator can't review things that weren't put in the original... Okay, yeah. The, the findings of fact for the appeal can't contain things that the zoning administrator didn't review. He needs to review it. So I think we should continue this matter. And now I guess the only question is, how long of a continuance do the parties want?
I, I mean, uh...
Okay, okay. All right, actually, it won't even be a continuance, it'll be a remand back to the zoning administrator for consideration of the materials that you submitted.
Perfect.
Okay.
So, just for the sake, for procedural, I'm sorry to...
No, no, go ahead.
Stay back, right?
Yeah.
Assuming we come to resolution, we can withdraw the application. If the appeal is, if we don't find resolution, are we in a position where I have to refile the appeal application on a remand, or am I able to use the, the existing denial?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that question as I sit here right now.
Okay, and maybe that's something we could discuss with Patrick. And again, I appreciate the boards giving us the opportunity to just kind of square away what, to see if there is a possible resolution.
Okay. Here's, here's what we'll do. So we're gonna, we're gonna do two things. One, we're gonna remand it back to the zoning administrator to consider the materials that are in your findings of fact. And two, I'm gonna give you a continuance date to come back and tell me how the, how it went on remand.
Okay.
All right, so we'll keep this open and pending.
Perfect. Mike, the property owner is not going to be here in July, so if we can have an August date, it, it just gives us even more time. Hopefully, we can resolve it before then, but on an outside date, if the August date works for the board, it would work for us.
Yeah. All right, okay, so this is matter 118-23-A. It's being remanded back to the zoning administrator for consideration of the materials submitted by the applicant, and it will also be continued to July, I'm sorry, August 18, 2023, and no further notice will be given.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is... Skip it, okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna skip over 40-23-Z, 41-23-Z, and 42-23-Z because the applicant and the Alderman are attempting to work something out on that one. Oh, actually, he's right, he's right back, so we will call calendar number 40-23-Z, 41-23-Z, and 42-23-Z.
After speaking with the applicant and Chairman Dowell, we respectfully request a continuance on this matter.
Okay. And does July work?
Yeah, as soon as possible. It's perfectly fine.
All right. So this is calendar numbers 40-23-Z, 41-23-Z, and 42-23-Z will be continued to July 21, 2023, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you for your understanding, Chairman.
Thank you. So this doesn't happen very often, but calling our last case of the day. Calendar numbers 159-23-Z, 160-23-Z, and 161-23-Z. Okay. Would everyone who's planning to testify on this matter raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, good morning, Board. My name is Gerardo Garcia. I'm the property owner at 3551 West Evergreen Avenue and representing myself. With me is my architect.
Good morning. My name is Augustine Gomez-Lio. I'm the architect, working with the owner on this property.
And really, what we're seeking is variations for front yard reduction, side yard reductions, and a parking reduction in order to establish a single-family home on a substandard lot here.
Okay. Can you get into the hardship, why these variations are needed?
Sure, I, I can start us off, and Augustine, feel free to fill in any details, but essentially, it's a triangular, substandard lot. We know that a single-family home existed there up until 1977 and was demolished. Not sure what caused demolition, although there was a demolition lien by the city. And basically, in order to fit kind of a, a single-family home similar with what's being built in new construction in the area and to meet our programmatic requirements, it's very difficult to do on a triangular site. And it's probably part of the reason why no one else has taken this on in nearly 50 years.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, it's definitely, definitely what you said, Trey.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions either. We'll, we'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryle?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in closed session. So we have to go somewhere?